Okay, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 on March 5. Before we do so and get into our business, I've been asked to once again read about the Con Edison Natural Gas Moratorium. So this is a notice that the town is issuing to all stakeholders. Con Edison has imposed a natural gas moratorium and applications must be submitted by March 15, 2019. Con Edison has imposed a moratorium on new natural gas connections and applications must be received by no later than March 15, 2019. Construction must be completed within two years. Applications are being accepted for projects that have received approvals and are ready to be built as those that are still in the planning stage. Contact Con Edison for more details at their website, which is, I'm not going to read it because it goes off for two lines, or by telephone at 1-800-643-1289, Select 1. That's your peril. Con Edison advises that requests for natural gas connections for emergency generators are not affected by the moratorium. Moreover, this is only for new applicants. It is not supposed to impact anyone who is currently supplied by gas and without any changes in application. In short, if you like your gas, you can haft, you can have it, you can use it and keep it. So we have that information. The town, by the way, is it on the website?
It is.
Our letter that we wrote, the joint letter from the town board and planning board, wrote to the PSC and to Con Edison in connection with this moratorium. We took a position on it, so that's on the website. Okay, let's move now into the agenda. If it's okay with everyone, since I see they're here and I hate to have them waste their time, can we handle the request for the extension for the Upper West Coast Muslim Society? First, this is an application for a site plan, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, steep slopes permit, 130 Plainsbridge Road. As I understand it, there are no legal issues or staff issues or engineering issues that would cause us any kind of concern in connection with this extension? So not seeing any problems or issues. Is there a motion to grant the extension sought by the applicant?
I have a question before we go there. Are there any time limits on any of our permits, ultimate time limits, or do we have the jurisdiction to forever move them forward?
I think we have the ability to move them forward as long as we feel we can. I'm not aware of any kind of time restrictions as long as there's not a material change in the application or the, whatever the proposal is, right? In fact, just the opposite. I think they have certain rights to continue. Maybe the attorney would like to tell me more about this, of course.
I don't want to waste your time. I'm happy to.
No, it's okay. Please.
I do have a question about that.
Sure.
Just in general, not pertaining to your application.
Okay.
As these applications sometimes get postponed or extended, sometimes our regulations change. Would an applicant then be subject to a changed regulation, or is the application always grandfathered in?
It depends. You ask the best questions.
If I can add one thing. You should have given the answer in the form of a question.
If it's vested rights in connection with a subdivision, after they've gotten final subdivision approval and the plat maps have been filed, there's a period in which any changes in law don't apply, but that doesn't apply to other approvals necessarily.
I would differ. I think the vested rights doctrine does apply across the board, but that's, I don't, it's an academic issue.
Well, what constitutes vested rights in this case?
What constitutes vested rights? Substantial investment, and there's been case law from the Court of Appeals saying that it also applies to soft costs as well.
Oh.
Including the significant expense that our clients have spent.
Like an EIS, for example.
There's a statute that protects them on subdivisions. Vested rights, as Dan is saying, does apply across the board. Question of what constitutes vested rights is a more difficult issue sometimes to determine.
Well, it's not before us now. I was just curious.
Okay. I'm done. Okay. Is there a motion to grant?
They requested that you make the extension from this date forward. Could you please not do that and make it from the March 2 date because it's too hard to keep track?
Fine. Okay. Fair enough. Okay.
That was reasonable to me.
Yep, it does. Yep, I see on the sheet here. Yep. Okay. Would that change? Is there a motion to grant the extension?
Some motions.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good job, everybody.
Janice, just note that I didn't vote. Just note that I didn't vote. I'm not allowed to vote on this.
You're accused. Okay.
I'm assuming so.
Yep. Very good. Okay, we move now to our first item of substance that is a public hearing. This is on Cary Homes LLC, formerly Belie. This is an application for an integrated plot plan amendment for clearing and grading limit lines. Amendment approval, steep slope permit amendment and tree removal permit approval amendment, excuse me, 54 and 60 Cary Lane.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Go for the changes in the application, right?
For the changes in the...
Go for the changes, right? It says last year.
Yes. So should I recap where we are, or is it...
Just the changes that we're looking at here.
The change from the last time we've met is the big blue area, which is the area that encompasses the existing home. We, based on last meet, the last meeting, we wanted to detail showing what the footprint of the house would be and associated driveway and any of the associated tax or patio.
Well, by way of procedure, we probably should move to open the public hearing.
Yes, we should. That's right. This is not a change. This is a new public hearing.
Public hearing.
Okay. Excuse me. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Sorry.
So I basically finished the thought. So the house is, we see it as the, I don't know if you can see it there clearly enough, but it's the, that's the new proposed location for the home, and there's a, on the left-hand side of the deck, on the rear is a patio, and then we have the driveway that comes off the cul-de-sac.
We now see the driveway is connected to the home in this drawing, the sketch, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Sabrina, do you have any issues, questions you want to raise at this point?
No, I do not. I reviewed the application. Because it's a new application, it's, again, an unlisted action. I provided to you the information necessary to make an environmental determination. The changes that have been made, my comments regarding development coverage still stand, both from building and development coverage, they're within the limitations set forth for this lot. Nothing has changed there. The applicant has detailed the driveway connections, the walkways, the patios, all of that, and it's still under what is the maximum development and building coverage for this lot. Other than that, all the setbacks are still being met from a planning standpoint. It is all conforming.
Okay. One question I had was, when we refer to acres, do you refer to building acres? Is that 40,000 square feet?
One acre is 40.
4,560.
Okay. Great. Okay. Good. Bob, did you have any issues or...
Basically, my comments were put into the resolution. The only new comment I had based on a lesson of it was that they evidently reconfigured driveway for a lot, wanted to retain more that's now approximately six feet in height. Obviously, I have to submit the proper engineer plans for that. To demonstrate that they need the factors of safety for sliding overturning the settlement. And the other comments were addressed on my previous memo.
Right.
They have been incorporated into the resolution.
Do they need a guide rail on top of the retaining wall for the trailer?
No, it's actually cut. It's a cut. They're railing on top for safety, but not something for the automobile piece, it's a cut. They drop stand.
So there will be a...
Something on top of the wall?
Yes, a railing.
I mean?
A railing.
A railing.
Right. And that, you understand that, right?
Yes.
Now, that be submitted. That's usually generally obtained prior to the BP.
Will that be a standard guide rail, or just some other kind of decorative rail?
It's New York State Building, called a railing. Not a guide rail, just not to recall.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Steve, did you have any questions or comments on this?
No additional comments. They've addressed, there's no additional trees being removed.
Right, we just talked about that one tree last time.
At the last meeting.
Yeah.
Everything is fine.
Okay. Good. Questions, comments from board members?
Housekeeping.
Okay. Fine.
Okay. On page two of seven.
Not up to that.
I mean?
No, that's, yeah. Any substantive issues? Because we have to take comments from the public.
Well, I don't know. There's some things in here that I don't understand.
Oh, okay.
Throughout these documents.
Okay, fine.
They're not of substance, they're minor, but you don't want the record to be anything but, yeah, perfect.
Absolutely.
I am curious, on page two, in the second whereas, there are three different lot sizes, yet there are only two different building coverage numbers. Or should there only be one building coverage number? I'm confused.
In the paragraph above, on the second whereas, it goes through each lot. Lot one shall not exceed a building coverage and shall not exceed a total development coverage. Lot two shall not exceed a building coverage and shall not exceed a total development coverage. And lot three shall not exceed a building coverage and shall not exceed a total development coverage.
That's true, but all of the development coverages are the same, which...
Correct.
Implies the same lot size, and yet the building coverage for lot three is not the same number.
The, there's two lots which are of the same size in the subdivision.
May be close, but on the front page, we say there are 2.05, 2.00, and 2.02.
There's rounding that has occurred. There's no decimals in here. We can add the decimals in.
If you, if that's what you say, you're saying then you rounded 05 up to .1.
Correct.
Okay. That helps, eh? All right. Moving along. That's taken care of. On the short form. I'm confused a little bit. On page one of three, there's a total acreage to be physically disturbed, which is 1.99 acres.
The applicant's short form, or the...
Whatever it says. The applicant's short form.
That would be your short form.
Yes. Okay. But I think back on February 19th, was it? But I think in your memo, it was...
Less. It was less.
It was less, so it's now more.
Correct. It is now more because we included the total area of the driveway and the disturbance. We, there were changes to the clearing and grading limit line request from the last to tonight. 1.99 is the total area of disturbance based on this plan.
Excellent. So we don't care if there's a small math mistake on page one, but the total acreage... Let me ask another question. The total acreage of the site is 4.58 acres, and that's with the common driveway, and the total acreage to be physically disturbed is 1.99, and so the total acreage in any continuous properties, shouldn't that be 4.58 still? Do you add A and B to get C?
I'm gonna look at the five. It should be, you do, well, total acreage, project site owned or controlled by the applicant. So this includes the entire development.
Sure, and so does the top number.
Correct, so that should, well, if we're looking at this change for this application, which is now this lot, Les, what do you say?
Well, I think what we've got here is we have half the application the first time. We're doing the second half this time, and then we're doing a resolution, which is both. So that's why it's a little bit tricky.
It's a little bit confusing.
All right, fair enough. On page two?
But to bring the board some comfort, the EAF is a guideline. We try and get to, you know, best form as we possibly can.
Okay. That's fine. On page two, number 11, do the proposed action connect to the existing wastewater utilities? The answer is no. If no, describe the method for providing wastewater treatment. It's blank.
Wastewater...
Septic.
Septic.
It should be on the form before we finish everything. Okay? Yeah, on this form, I'm confused how it works.
Which one?
This is, ah, short form two.
Part two and three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. I guess it's a small impact, so I'll let that be.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Okay.
Good.
I had a question about, I haven't seen it before, but what do we normally see in the slope maintenance agreements? What are, just for a point of information, what we normally see in terms of the components of such an agreement?
With the slope easements they have to file? Well, basically, it states...
Well, it's a maintenance agreement also, right?
Yeah, it states in there that the applicant is responsible to maintain the slope in its stable form, and if it's not, and we believe it's a problem with erosion, the town can let there notify them, and if they don't do it, the town has the right to come in and do it themselves in fact.
Do we earmark, you know, certain kinds of standards that we want to see for that stabilization? Do we advise vegetation or something like this?
We usually fall back on the regulations in chapter 108.
Right.
Which is steep slopes protection.
Right.
Where the slopes can't proceed at a certain grade, yet to be stabilized with grass.
Okay.
So if they're not maintained, we can make the applicant do it and meet with them. If not, the town will do it, and then the, I guess, put the, add it into their taxes, I believe.
Okay. That's just in perpetuity agreement, right?
That's how most of them are written.
Okay.
I defer to the attorneys on that, but I believe that's what we do.
Okay. Good. Anyone else? Anything? Any comments from the public on this application? Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We have a, do we have a neg deck in front of us?
It's attached to...
It's attached to one of these memos.
Can you reach out my memo on the back?
Okay. Let's take a review with us, for us. Is there a motion to adopt the neg deck?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We have a, do we have a neg deck in front of us?
It's attached to...
It's attached to one of these memos.
Can you reach out my memo on the back?
Okay. Let's take a review with us, for us. Is there a motion to adopt the neg deck?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we have a resolution in front of us. I'm not sure what version I have in front of me anymore, but I know that there were a couple of minor changes that were made. Bob had to make a couple of changes with regard to the number of rounds, et cetera. Came in late, but other than, and I think last you made some changes a couple of days ago. Sabrina, you've...
Mine have been incorporated.
Okay. So are there any other issues or changes or questions on the, in the resolution? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as amended?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
All righty.
Good evening.
Yep, you too. Take care.
You too.
Good evening. Hi, Jerry, how are you?
Thank you.
We come to our second item. This is also a public hearing. Jennifer, is this a continued public hearing?
This is continued, yes.
So this is the Chapco Central School District, application for preliminary subdivision plant, tree removal permit, steep slopes permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals, Button Hook Road and Sabina Road.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the project architect for the project. With me tonight is Mr. John Chow of the Chapco Central School District, Randy Katchas, and Paul Gueye, who is an engineer from WSP, who is taking over the project for the previous engineer. So I want to thank the board and staff for getting this draft resolution together. We've had a chance to look through it, and quickly, and generally, I think everything looks like it's pretty much right on. We know that we have a laundry list of items to take care of, to work through final. I discussed a little bit with Bob today, maybe setting up a meeting with the staff, maybe for next Friday, so we can start working through this stuff and making sure that we hit all the points and make sure that everything is satisfied according to Bob's comments, especially he has the most, Sabrina as well. But we're looking forward to working through that and moving along. I guess we're here to see if there's any questions. I know Paul is here. He's getting up to speed quickly on this, and I think probably best that we can have Paul and Bob, when we have a sit-down, and go through the technical items. I know Paul was looking through it, and I think he's found some typos to maybe answer some of your questions, but I think that's probably a technical matter best handled with staff.
Sure.
So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Okay. Are there any questions at this point? I mean, substantive on anything that Bob has written in his report? If it's substantive, we should probably hear about it now and talk about it, otherwise I think Jerry's proposal to deal with staff meetings is fine.
Then the short answer is no.
Love short answers. That's great.
You're welcome back anytime.
Okay. Sabrina, anything?
No comments.
Want to add? Bob, you've, we've got your comments?
I'm fine. I'm not going to read my comments right now. I'd love to back those up.
I did talk with Bob before, and if we were so inclined, he was comfortable with conditioning his observations in the resolution. This is preliminary. We have it on the swing at it final anyway, but Bob was comfortable with conditioning these in the resolution.
So are they, is that reflected in the draft resolution that we were just handed?
It's, I haven't read it that quickly, but we've been told that's the case. So I can't say for sure. So I don't know. Any other questions on it at this point? I mean, that we need to talk about?
I have a minor question or two on one of the forms.
I have, yeah, but, well, no, it's on the EAF, so we can wait until we get to that part of the discussion.
That's the, just procedurally, that's fine if you have questions on the EAF. The neg deck was adopted at your last meeting.
Oh, okay. So on pages three and four of the narrative, we talk about the 50% reduction and the replacement for the invasive trees, but since the applicant has withdrawn that request, should we take all of that out of the narrative?
That narrative was adopted at your last meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, that, the part three, the negative declaration was adopted at your last meeting.
Thank you very much.
So now, any, so since that portion of their application has been withdrawn, going forward, any resolution will reflect that?
Okay. Okay.
I have a question on the full EAF, on page five of 10. Item number eight. of forest, because the forest is coming down. I think it's easy to have an explanation point, you know, an explanation comment that there's going to be X acres of deforestation, and then there's going to be replacement planting, but I don't know how the form is supposed to work in that particular case.
Again, the forms, the part two and the part three of the form was adopted by the board at your last meeting before the opening of the public hearing.
Yeah, well, okay, good. Got some stuff to free then, I think.
Steve, I had a question for you. You mentioned at one point, and I think it was something that we would condition, that there was some sort of protocol we should follow in terms of the clearing of the trees because of the bats, et cetera, and some sort of seasonal protocol that we should impose. I wasn't quite sure I saw that.
Yeah, it's in...
It's in your memo?
No, memo number eight, or number nine.
Are we hearing about it?
Yeah, page six.
On the last page, page six.
Okay.
And it states there, there's specific timeframe.
Good, good.
Yeah, they're restricted declaring the trees only between October 1st and March 31st.
Good. Are the applicants aware of that and if something that we'll condition? Okay.
Is that in the resolution, too?
It should be. I hope so.
Bob, Steve, was it in the resolution?
I don't know. They had it in the resolution.
If it's not, we can make sure that it's added.
Right. You, whatever you feel you're unsure of tonight because you haven't let it, you can condition it as part of approval.
Right.
And then we'll check it and make sure it's in.
And I think certainly, I mean, before the board acts on this, you know, I think it's reasonable, obviously, to give the board an opportunity to look through the resolution. It was prepared at a late hour. You're just seeing it for the first time now, so, you know, I don't think the board should feel rushed to move forward with something that you haven't had a chance to review. So, you know, even if we want to take a 10-minute recess, or however long to, you know, if you have an opportunity to review it, that's more than reasonable. Yeah.
Okay. I had questions about, Jerry, on your letter, I just wanted to better understand what's really going on here now with the trees. So you abandoned that request for the reduction of 50% because of the invasive species, and I'm trying to understand the figures here, so that you've indicated something on the order of a quarter of a million dollars for cost for replacing the trees, and then, of course, you're asking for a bond and a reduction of that later on as it goes further into the bond duration. I just want to understand these figures. Are those the figures that, is that what's going into the tree bank? Is that what the shortfall is? Is that just your cost?
There is no shortfall. We were able to accommodate all the trees and shrubs on the property, and those are installed costs.
Okay. And I think we have a 10-year monitoring plan from you, but you're still asking for a five-year, or have you abandoned that request also?
We've abandoned that, too. We've agreed to the 10-year.
Okay.
I thought we talked about letting it step down.
Yes, I think after five years.
So the builder doesn't have to hold on to that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right.
And I think Steve told us last time that there would be mechanisms in place that we could follow.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else, by the way? Any questions?
I just have a comment that we talked about a reduction, you know, for the trees that were invasive, and we can't do anything about that at this time, but I suggest that we put that on a table for future, to go forward to the downboard, to see if there's some reasonable change that can be made in the future.
By the way, I don't know what the plan was, but is this area, is this road fed by natural gas from Con Edison? Is that the plan, that this would have been natural gas?
Yeah, we understand they won't be.
I think we checked into that, and I don't think there's any gas out there.
Okay, so this will be oil?
Good, then you won't be disappointed.
I'm coming off my pillow.
Okay. Anyone else, anything?
Yeah, thank you for enclosing the map where the septic systems were, I appreciate that. That makes me feel much more comfortable.
Yeah, you're okay with that? Okay, good.
Thanks to Bob, he's going to give us the information.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any comments, questions from the public on this application? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some over.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we want to take a few minutes and come back, take the next application, and try to read it? I mean, I think we really should read through the resolution before we adopt it.
It's like a, be able to understand why this latest version of this resolution is coming to us hot off the press at the last minute. And I worry that, I mean, I don't want to be setting a precedent, this is the way we do business. I mean, it seems to me that for every other applicant that we've dealt with, we have put them to the task of, and the staff also, to the task of getting things to us in a timely fashion, so that we can do things deliberatively. And there's no reason that I can see why this particular applicant shouldn't be treated in the same way. Treated sounds pejorative, but I don't mean it that way. It is treated the same way, treated fairly, as all the other applicants are. I'm just worried it sets a precedent. Maybe the board wants to say, well, in this particular case, we'll let it go, but I'm just uncomfortable with it. I mean, we're in a position, we used to be, before we had emails, before we had all the technology we have now, and this is going back 15 years when I was first on the board, we religiously got documents to review days before the meetings, usually the Friday before. And it's come to, now we get, we get them, we have to pull them down online, and sometimes they appear offline, and sometimes they appear the day of the meeting. To have a, to have a resolution be treated in the same way, to me, is cutting it too close to the chase here. It seems to me that we really need to be more deliberative about it.
Okay, fair enough, fair point. How do others feel?
I feel the same way. I would only say that it, perhaps it would help mollify it a little bit, if staff is overburdened, which seems to be happy more often than in the past, that we get a notice that will be things that are late, so we can look for them. Whether it be, if staff hasn't had enough time to review a late submittal, and if it gets egregious enough, I guess we could say, okay, postpone it, if it's a controversial enough project. However, I think we've been, in this particular case, we've gone through this project quite heavily with great detail, and the applicant has been quite helpful and responsive in general. So, I agree totally with Tom, save my somewhat exculpatory comments.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I think what we ought to do then is, I know it sounds disappointing to the applicant, but I think we're set, we've closed the public hearing. I think what we'll do is, we'll just put the adoption of the resolution on the next agenda. I mean, if you want to come, come, but if there are any questions, but I think that's what we're going to have to do.
It'd be great. That's fine.
Okay.
I think it's better to do the homework, and for both of us to read it, make sure what's in it is in it, and is proper. Knowing that it's coming, I think we can still, the district can still move forward in their process.
Yeah.
In the assumption that the resolution will come next meeting, so I'm okay with that.
Good, okay.
It's a better way to do business.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Tom.
Do you want to try and squeeze us on the 19th?
Yes.
Yes, in fairness, yes.
Yep. So schedule that between 8 o'clock and 8:02.
Well, hopefully it'll be to the point where it will take us two minutes.
Exactly.
If there's coffee.
If there's coffee. Good.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
And for clarification, we will not get another one between now and the 19th, or are we going to get another one?
Well, we might, no, we're going to have to get a change.
Building revisions.
Because we have this tree clearing issue.
It will be in the packet on Friday, no later than.
We already have the packet.
Yeah, it's right here in Friday.
Well, it's not in it.
Friday, there's the Friday.
Here it is, this is it.
Yeah, that's the package.
There's often another packet.
There's all sorts of stuff that trickles in.
Grab bag, it comes later on.
I'm quite serious about this. I mean, if it doesn't come, then we could get postponed again.
I completely understand.
Good, okay, thank you there. Okay, thanks. Okay, we move now to an informal hearing for a new application. This is the La Sala application for a site development plan approval for an accessory apartment at 48 Quaker Bridge Road. So the GPS was showing all different kinds of addresses, whether you are in Austin or Croton.
When I went to the site for the first time, it took me about 25 minutes to find it. So my GPS was taking me all over the place.
I've actually been to the site, so I know it, but it's weird, because it's giving all kinds of street addresses. You have to Google them.
Says up on your left, you pass it.
Yeah, exactly.
Very difficult.
So it's in Croton?
Correct. Mailing address, yeah.
Mailing.
Yeah, mailing address. It is, I think the property, I think the property is as west as you can get in Newcastle. I think it's the property that goes to the point. It is the point. And it's the property that therefore gave us the navigation rights to the Croton River.
I thought it was the Hudson.
Croton River.
Does the Croton River connect to the Hudson?
For those people who are still trading in furs, this is where you were doing it.
It's, it's...
I remember those days.
It's beautiful.
I have no doubt.
It's gorgeous.
Gorgeous.
Ravine down there is wonderful.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Corey Salamon, here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. La Sala, in connection with their accessory apartment application. Mrs. La Sala is here with me this evening, as is the project engineer, Ralph Alphonzetti. So the property is located at 48 Quaker Bridge Road, it's approximately 1.52 acres. It's improved with a single-family home, it's approximately 5,000 square feet, detached garage and outbuilding.
Pool.
Paths, driveways, and the accessory cottage, that's the subject of this application. So, when I was preparing for the application, I did research the files to see how all this came to be. And as it turns out, the assessor's card has the main house and many of the other improvements built in the 20s. The accessory cottage, that's the subject of the application, was built in the 1930s, and the pool was put in in 1960. No COs were issued at all. The first CO issued for the property was in 1964, an addition to the home. The second CO was 1990, for another addition to the home and a renovation of the kitchen.
When did they start receiving mail? I mean, that may be part of the problem.
Don't know. So, so I can't, you know, beyond that, the history, what I laid out in my letter, I can't really go much more into how everything got there, but this is where we find ourselves now. Mrs. La Sala and her husband purchased the property in 2009. When they purchased the property, the accessory cottage was in a dilapidated state, mildew, mold, rotting floors, the roof was kind of falling in. They had no use for it at the time, so they just went status quo. In 2016, they determined that due to Mrs. La Sala's mother's health conditions, it would be appropriate to move her into this cottage, allow Mrs. La Sala to be the primary caregiver, any medical equipment needed, there'd be space in there, obviously, there had to be renovations done. So in 2016, the existing cottage was 572 square feet, again, in its dilapidated state. Fortunately, without benefit of permit, cottage was taken down to the foundation and then rebuilt. When they rebuilt it, they added 324 square feet. Now it's approximately, I think, 896 square feet. They got a stop work order once the framing and the roof was up, and here we are before you now with this accessory apartment application. As I lay out in my letter, I believe we meet all the criteria in the code. The issue that we have is that the pre-existing condition of this site makes us non-conforming, you know, many things.
Was it five variances that will be needed?
Five variances, yes. And so procedurally, we're here tonight, as you know, just to give initial presentation to, answer any questions you have, and if your board deems appropriate, to seek a referral to the zoning board appeals.
When you demolished the cottage, did you leave the existing foundation in place, or did you move that foundation?
The foundation remained in place.
So, just for a clarification, is the existing, is the site of the existing cottage grandfathered?
I'd have to look into that.
Well, they lost a lot of their rights to have grandfathering when they knocked it down without a permit.
When they knocked it down without a permit, but the question is, if the foundation remained, did they retain any grandfathered rights?
Well, let's ask another question. You indicated that the original cottage was how many square feet?
572.
So that was the original foundation?
Correct.
Okay, so now, why is, isn't the foundation now, is for something that's over 1,000 square feet?
No, the foundation now is for something that's 896 square feet.
Okay, so it was 500 and something, and now it's for 900, for the foundation?
Correct.
All right, so...
Delta's 324, I think, right?
324, correct.
So the foundation got bigger?
Yes.
But you're still using the old foundation in part?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
When they took down the original cottage, before they started the new design, was it an architect or engineer that designed the new cottage?
Yes.
And they never filed anything for it?
I just got involved a year ago, I can't speak to what happened prior to my involvement. I'm not sure, I'll look into that for you, though.
Tell us about the septic situation. So there is a septic that somehow exists right now for the cottage.
Correct.
The cottage goes back to the 30s.
1938 is what the assessor's card has.
So, do we have any kind of information regarding the status of this septic, the functionality, and is it something that's still considered to be approved by the county, or the county would have a new approval situation here?
Can I bring my engineer up to answer the question?
Sure.
Because we met with Department of Health.
I'm Ralph Alphonzetti, I'm the engineer for the project. I was not involved a year ago, so, just for the record.
Why is your hair gray, if that's your hair? I don't understand.
It's the kids, the kids at home. So the septic, the health department does have a septic on record for the cottage. I don't have the date when it was constructed, but it is on record, and it's a viable septic system that they will sign off on. We met with the health department, explained the situation, as long as we don't go over the one-bedroom and kitchen that are in the cottage.
Do you have that in writing yet?
Well, we have the records that we pulled from the health department, so we have what's there, and they are willing to sign a plan from the architect that shows what's existing.
Can you get in writing that they're willing to sign that, please?
Yeah.
The foreman requires it.
And that was one of the conditions. Right.
They require the county to sign off on it, and then also to get us a copy of the actual approval, because they could not find it.
In our records.
I want to, yeah, I understand they do that, but I, I'm going to, it doesn't have a secondary system, I'm sure. They only have a primary system. And so the primary system is adequate, but if the rights have been lost underground, also to Sheila's question, I'll go back to you. Then, does the old system, is it grandfathered, even though the building itself is not grandfathered?
That's at the discretion of the Moesha's Academy Department of Health. I'm sure if they have objections to it, they won't sign the plan, and they have to redo a new septic system, but they have all the discretionary and approval authority on that.
But on the question that Dick and Sheila were asking, what was asked, and that was about whether or not we lost your pre-existing status, your letter suggests that they did with the demolition.
Correct.
And yet, we're not convinced that, we're not sure about that?
Well, his letter says yes. I did not verify his yes with the building inspector. Sheila asked a different question, and if my understanding is correct, the next question is, can you relocate the cottage to be more in conforming with the setback requirements? And that's a question, you know, and that's part of looking at this application, trying to reduce the number of variances that are required, trying to reduce the amount of development coverage that is on the site. You know, further explanation needs to be brought as to the use of the structure behind the garage. In my review, in looking at plans that were submitted from the 1960s to today, there are definitive additional development areas, impervious surface areas, patios, walkways, you know, really talking about those uses. Can we reduce some of those uses to make up some of the development coverage? And there's the ultimate understanding that this is an undersized lot in a two-acre, single-family zone, how much development can really occur on the property, given the two-acre coverages and the 1.52 acres of the property, those numbers are further reduced, and we have pre-existing already here. So, so it is, you know, it is to you, is it possible to relocate that and kind of do everything that we've been talking about?
Sure, so let's take it one step at a time.
Sure.
Due to the existing driveway, and Ralph chime in, if I'm saying something, that's wrong, but due to the existing driveway, the required setbacks from the well, and where the other septic is located, we can't relocate the septic, which limits where we can move that cottage.
Where is the septic for the cottage? I'll see if it's marked on the map here.
Yeah, we need some mapping along.
You've got a well up here, so we have...
It's on your plan, if you want to scroll through.
It is?
Not on this one.
Okay.
It's in the box. I think that's here, that must be it.
Yes, that is it.
Where is it?
So it's, if you can see the cottage and the driveway, it is in that area between...
Can you use the pointer?
Where's the pointer?
It's got the nice blue color to it.
Way too fancy for me.
There we go. Whoa, there's two of them now. What's going on?
Got to press the button.
There's three, they all have them.
Okay, so it's right about there.
The engineer do it, but not stand in our view.
Okay, so it's right here, that's what you're saying, right? And where's the well? That's the well?
The well is right about there.
There, okay.
Engineers are so easy.
Okay, so the location of the cottage can be changed, because if we leave the septic alone, we just rotate it over here somewhere, that's all.
Is the other septic out over there?
The other septic is in this area for the house. So we may be able to move it slightly, I mean, the...
What's the setback for a well? You've got a well around here.
It is a setback to a building.
Okay.
So, so one of the considerations is that this, there's been a structure here, what are the views onto the neighboring properties? How much, are we still going to need a variance if you shift it in, you know, what other, how many of the requested variances does it knock off the list? And what are the views to surrounding properties to determine whether or not we're gaining anything by moving the foundation?
Well, or what are the detriments for leaving it the way it's semi-proposed, without permit?
Does it only knock off one variance by moving it?
Setback.
The setbacks, right? All the other ones are still...
All the other ones, which are pretty severe.
Are doozies, yeah.
And, well, I mean, in point of fact, most of those are already, we're just exacerbating what's already there by 324 square feet. To answer your question, can we reduce some of the impervious? Yes, we will sit down with our client, the engineer, the architect, and there will certainly be some paths that we can get rid of, and some impervious services. Absolutely 324 square feet, to keep it where the number was, and we'll try to exceed that number. With respect, you asked about the building behind the garage? There's no utilities there, it's just used for storage.
$10.
With respect to the difference between the 1961 survey and this survey, your guess is as good as mine. I see everything that you're looking at, but I have no, you know, I've looked through your files, I have, you know, my client's title in 2009, I can't, you know, I'm not going to make up answers that aren't truthful, I just don't have any answers.
What do we have for neighbors over here, and how close are the neighbors?
Well, we can...
It's an aerial.
Yeah.
That was so fuzzy, though.
I'm familiar with the property up here, which is actually quite large, and there is a fairly steep slope that comes down to...
Down, yeah, down Glendale, hits the end. Let's rotate the...
Yeah, I'm familiar with this property here.
But there's some distance, and if you look at the photos, I mean, I went up to the site and took photos, looking, you know, from the property line at the cottage, and then from the cottage out at the property site.
I've been up here, and you really can't see anything down here, and I was there in the summertime, so I don't know.
See, I took all the pictures in the winter, so the leaves are down, and you still, from looking out at that property, you can't see anything up in that direction.
And that's this property up here, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. What's on the eastern side?
Another single-family company, as you can see in the pictures I submitted, you can, it's getting oriented.
Is it here?
Yes.
Yeah, there's houses on all three sides, except for the street.
But it looks like it's fairly, is this where the house is? So it looks like there's a fair amount of distance.
And that's a big piece of property, that one on the corner.
Well, I, I, I'll throw this out. I, you know, the consideration here is that I think would operate as a fairly severe financial penalty for someone who's trying to take care of a, a mother, a family member on site. You know, we could play with some of these things and reduce some of this, but in the end, you're still gonna need these variances. I mean, nothing conforms here. One of the things that's pre-existing, we have a, a pool in the front yard. I mean, it's just, it's crazy.
How did that happen?
I, you know, who knows? But it is what it is. And I think almost to, to cause another foundation to be built and move this, I'm not quite sure the benefit is that substantial. And the financial penalty is, is severe, and, you know, it's, it's an accessory apartment. I think the public policy is to try to, as much as possible, to accommodate these kinds of structures.
Within the limitations, though, of the thousand square feet?
Yes.
Which is over?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Hundred and ninety-six.
Eight hundred and ninety-six.
So it's under a thousand?
Oh.
Yeah, no, it's...
It's under.
The, the application conforms to every letter of, of the accessory apartment regulations. You know, the only areas that this is not conforming...
Is everything else.
Is, is all the setbacks, the coverages, all of that.
It's a neverland of zoning.
Correct, correct.
Just for, for the record, the setbacks didn't conform.
Previously.
Previously.
Yes, right.
Yeah, but, right.
Well, well, and, and a majority of them are pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming. Because the cottage was taken down, it makes these needing to be renewed.
No, no, I understand. I'm, I'm just...
It's a moot point.
Well, it's just that, it's not like we put this cottage here and are in the setbacks. This is, yes, we're not grandfathered, but...
But you're trying to put it back in, within the setback. The proposal is to put it back within the setback, so...
Yeah, no, 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 my point is just that the neighbors, they've been looking at something in this location the whole time. It's not really a huge change for them. You know, the expansion, three hundred and twenty-four feet may sound like a lot, but it's four feet here, five feet there. If I had the house there right now, and you looked at it, and then you came back tomorrow and I put the other one there, I'm not sure that you'd, without seeing them side to side, you'd be able to tell the difference.
Well, you know what? That's, I think that's probably for the ZBA.
Absolutely.
Yep.
We might have an opinion about that.
Yeah, you have to consider it. Two architects, one engineer, so we might be able to discern the difference.
Well, there, there is a...
The general public, then.
I guess we're just here is going to be.
We're, Sheila and I are just here.
And it's good you are.
We're like planning board ballast.
Okay, there, it's, it's, yeah, the existing homeowners who are, are neighbors, probably, they've been looking at something for a long time, although there's, the cottage's torn down now, so they're not looking at anything.
Well, no, it's...
It's actually up now.
It's framed in roof. It's up.
So you put it back up?
Yeah, they gotta stop work.
Halfway, and we gotta stop work order.
But, okay. So, my point is, it was taken down, now it's, there's another one that's going back up in this place with a bigger foundation, and it's, it's a bigger building, right?
Correct.
And it's within the setback, and the existing neighbors might very well say, well, jeez, I've been looking at this thing for a long time, so, you know, it's not a problem. But we, we have to be concerned about and represent more than just the existing homeowners, right? There are future homeowners who will most certainly come in one day, and there are expectations about how this, our community is formed. And the expectations are those which are within the zoning code, and the setbacks and all that other stuff, and we're here to protect that for the larger community.
Yeah, and I think Sabrina raised a, a point about the visual effects, and I think that, that brings me to, there's gonna have to be some screening of this new building, even though there's none there now, for what Tom just addressed.
Well, I'm, I'm, yes, if, if one allows it to, to be completed, I would absolutely agree, but I am, I am, I mean, I'm really talking about the large, to the larger point, not the setback, the larger point of, it just seems to me that this is the opportunity for corrective measures. And I understand that the getting accessory apartments is a positive good, but at what cost? To the, to the town and to what we are responsibilities. And to me, for me, I just think that this is, now, you may go, it's way over. I think that this needs to be, that the property needs to be brought into conformance, and we put the, the onus on property owners to do that. And there's no reason why this particular application should be seen any differently. We have others who, before us, which are very severe as well currently, and we need to be sure that we're being, you know, we're being very careful about these things and, and sticking to as much as we can to the letter of the law here. So, that's not to say you can't go to the ZBA, but whether you get a, a referral from this board for a, a, for a positive review by the ZBA is something which I think we need to talk about.
Understood, and I understand your, your point, which I think is why we're offering to try to reduce the non-conformities in other aspects in order to, you know, kind of counterbalance allowing us to have this accessory apartment. We'll find other areas to reduce impervious surface and come closer to conform, I mean, you know, we're never gonna come in conformity with this property. It's an impossibility. But we can, you know, whittle away and try to get closer.
Well, that is a thing...
You're like eight thousand feet over, so when you talk about whittling away, are you talking to three hundred and twenty-four feet that you did the expansion? Are you talking three thousand feet?
We have to sit down and look to see.
I mean, there's lots of structures, there's lots of concrete structures on here.
And we have to take a look at everything.
Do you have any idea what half of them are?
Sure.
I mean, like, back up in the corner, there's a concrete building here behind the garage.
Sure, so that, that's...
That stucco building, what is that?
It's used as storage now. Apparently, at some point in time, whoever used to own the property had a pony, and they kept the pony in there. And then you'll see behind it, there's a fenced-in area that has concrete that was...
It's paved with concrete curb?
And they would keep the, you know, the ponies in there, and then it was used as a dog run by a subsequent owner.
Yeah, that's, that building is particularly, that whole complex back there is kind of irksome.
Right on the corner, yeah.
I mean, there's no setback whatsoever.
There's a double...
Right on the line.
Yeah.
I mean, I would, yeah, one of the things that crossed my mind is just destroy them, take it out.
I, I think that, exactly, and I, I think that what you're, what the applicant, what I would encourage the applicant to do is to look at the property, look at the numbers, and decide, what do I really want here? What is most important to me? And these accessory buildings, which maybe serve a purpose now, maybe don't serve a purpose now, some of them. I think the big question would be, do I really want this cottage so much that I'm willing to take drastic measures to clean up the rest of the property and get rid of accessory buildings that really are serving a lesser purpose? Anything you can do to get closer to the numbers, I think, I think, would be good. I don't know if you're gonna get there.
I don't know that we can get to the number, but we can certainly try.
And I'm not guaranteeing that you're, I'm not guaranteeing that, that your efforts are gonna get you there here, right? But if you want, if you want to go ahead and give it a shot, obviously, you're welcome to.
Yeah, there's a, another thing, too, that, that, yeah, I could see, if you got rid of the building in the corner right here, I would assume since it's storage, if it's full of storage, well, then maybe they can have a sale or something, but if, I, I wouldn't object too much if an extension to the garage, you know, took some of, maybe a third of what's in that pony shed. You know, something like that, and you get rid of the concrete floor in the corner and the other, you know, all that stuff is gone. This, I don't know how this, this, the, you know, the runoff works here with all the, the site. Whether it goes onto other people's properties, or is it all directed to storm sewers in the street? I'd like to know that, because, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that have been done before the rules came into effect, and we have to respect what was done then to a certain extent, probably a large extent. But I could see, for instance, if you're building a new building, and we have any hint that there's some sort of surface runoff issue, you know, then I would say, well, let's, let's build a cold, you know, you know, a underground recharge basin for the roof of the, of the, the accessory apartment.
Just from a technical standpoint, chapter one oh eight wouldn't apply in this case.
I know it wouldn't apply.
However, it's a plenty of, has all the discretion to make the new apartment stormwater U.C. fit.
Well, there's a lot of asphalt on, on the, on the site as well, and again, if some of those buildings are changed or taken down, again, I would encourage the applicant to look at that. And the other thing I, I would say is, as you look at these, and perhaps you come back and you take some of these things out, you're still gonna be non-conforming in some of the areas, and I think we touched on this before, but what you ought to do is also supplement and tell us what you're gonna do in terms of landscaping, and where, how are you going to create buffers to offset some of the other things that you can't change and that are just too close. So again, creativity in that regard would be, I think, helpful to us in terms of both removal as well as construction going forward.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Annie LaSala, the applicant. So I wanted to address a couple of the questions. In terms of some privacy hedges, I actually ran into my neighbor that lives in the house down here.
Down where?
The...
Here?
Yeah, that property, yeah. Speaking, not wanting to speak for them too much, but they are and have been incredibly supportive of this process. What they were looking at before was really dilapidated. So, when I spoke to him yesterday, I let him know that our intention is to put arborvitae, a wall of arborvitae, in between the cottage and their property. There is some work going on behind us at that house that you are familiar with, so, but that's what kind of prompted the conversation. And I said, oh, don't worry, you know, we're doing some screening for you. As far as the structures that are behind the garage, they are storage, the garage, there's a step up, and then there's a, one room that has, you know, like a little bit of a vault, and then another little room. Those can be demolished if it pleases the board for this application. I would prefer to have the accessory apartment. I don't remember who made the point, but yeah, that's definitely something that can go. The accessory apartment, my mother's a widow, and it's basically what it is. She's got kidney disease. She's gonna need dialysis. I'm going to try to do hemodialysis, which is dialysis in the home. And so whatever I need to do with the property, that I can do, that we can do, we are willing to do. There's a barbecue area that was pre-existing. It's an old stone kind of a thing. We can take that out.
Right.
I'm trying to think of what else. Anyway, I wanted to address a couple of your questions, but go ahead if you have another one.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And, you know, in the, in the academy area, you should, you can discuss with your client, you know, that for walkways and things that maybe don't have much tire traffic from vehicles, you can have, I don't know what they call it, grasscrete or something like that.
Turf stone.
Yeah, which gives some additional drainage and it has a different factor. We give it a different factor for runoff, I think, or...
Yes, it does.
Yeah, okay, so that helps.
We have an area behind the house that right now is a gravel rectangular area that we really don't spend any time on. It's just sort of the topography of the house that was there. That's a nice area that we could put this stone, whatever you call it.
Turf stone.
Turf stone. That would be a substantial amount of space. And then there are, there's a, can I...
Here's LaSala. That gravel area, which looks to be next to a kind of nice sizable flagstone patio, could you return that to landscaping?
The gravel area?
The gravel area, as opposed to putting turf stone there, could you return it to...
There's a retaining wall, like, so it would be a little difficult. There's a big tree with another retaining wall, and then already sort of like a planting area, and then the, the base. So to make the whole thing, I'd kind of, I don't know how I would do that.
Well, can you create a walkway across that and then get rid of half the gravel?
Yeah, sure.
I, I think, I think examining, examining what you want to keep on the property, make functionally better on the property, keeping in mind the exceedances and trying to reduce them substantially, I think is what the board is looking for.
Yes, and substantially as in, the, the accessory apartment is, it's a necessity for you, I think, is what you're saying, for your family. And I totally completely appreciate that. What is not a necessity and is an amenity is the swimming pool. And the swimming pool is, it's out of position anyway on the property, and that's eight thousand square feet right there if you add up all the, all the paving that's associated with it and the pool itself, and that's, that's coverage area. The eight thousand square feet in terms of the coverage you're over, that's about eight thousand square feet right there. And, and I know it sounds harsh, but it, it occurs to me that it's out of position anyway. It's an amenity, and maybe you ought to think about sacrificing an amenity for the necessity of the, of the accessory apartment.
Sacrificing the pool?
Yes.
Now, that would not be an immediate first choice. I mean, we have three kids. You know, we bought the house because of the pool.
I had three kids.
So, no, I mean, we, we...
Lots of three kids without pools.
We, we, absolutely, hundreds of thousands, but no, we bought the house because of the amenities that it had. The location, you know, the, the house is a Mediterranean style with terracotta roof. We bought it for what it was.
I understand.
So...
It's your value system, that you are putting on a pool.
No, no, I understand, and I'm, that's why I'm saying, yes, I do need to have that cottage.
But not at the expense of the pool.
The, the pool is another part of our family time. We use it as soon as we can into the fall. My, my father spent a lot of time there before he passed away. My father-in-law spent time there before he passed away. So it's, I, I'm not saying, it, I'm not saying it's not a luxury, but it's something that our family really enjoys.
I'm not disputing that.
So, it would not be something that I would say we would want to give up for the cottage.
I understand that. I completely understand that.
I mean, but do I understand in that, is that what you're asking? Am I understanding your question?
What I'm saying is you are eight thousand square feet over on, on development coverage. Eight thousand square feet on, on what is only permitted to be eleven hundred square, eleven, I'm sorry, one thousand, one hundred. It's actually eleven thousand square feet rounded, is what you're allowed, and you're at eighteen thousand.
Okay.
So you're eight thousand over.
Okay.
So this is not a small matter, right? This is a big, let me finish, this is a very big deal.
Okay.
And to me, it's such a big deal that, for me, it'll be interesting to see how else you get there. But you're, already you said that you, I think you said that you'd like to save this building up in the corner. I mean, I, maybe you didn't say that.
No, I said...
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. But you're not gonna get to eight thousand square feet, I don't think, with these...
But I, I also, I'm sorry, Mr. Curly, respectfully, I'm, I can't tell you that I'm here to try to get to eight thousand square feet. I don't know half the stuff that's on there, more than half the stuff that's on there. There are walkways. There's a little line of a walkway that is, I'll show you, this little thing right here. It's, it's tiny little pieces of flagstone that are mostly covered by dirt. Those have been pre-existing, and we've just never cleaned them up, moved them, nothing, and they kind of just...
So, like, so what I would recommend is that, I think what we all recommend, is that you go back and you find as many square feet as you can that you are willing to sacrifice in order, in trade for. My suggestion was that, I, I don't know how, how close you're gonna get, but it seems to me that you're gonna have, for me, you're gonna have to get really close, because you're so egregiously over that it's, please let me finish. You are so over that it's, you're gonna have to, for me, you're gonna have to go a long way to get close enough to say, okay. And I put the swimming pool up there as, as an easy, in terms of the numbers, as an easy trade. It's your value system. You decide what you want to do.
Now, you may be able to add up the buildings up in the corner, and the fireplace pits, and some of those walkways. Maybe not get to eight, maybe get to six or seven, but I get, again, it's what you're, what you value the most on the property. If the house is one, the cottage is two, and the pool is three, then take a hard look at everything else.
If you're trying to solve for keeping the pool and building the cottage, then you need to solve for that.
That's fine, and whatever other information, you know, you would want to know in terms of areas where we could find space, I'm happy. Like I said, there's walkways that are, but a lot of this has been pre-existing. I...
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, I just want to point out that before the cottage was taken down, in two thousand and sixteen, the existing development coverage was eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine square feet that my client... sixty-nine square feet, that my client had nothing, other than purchasing it.
We understand.
But what, what, why is that not a moot point? I don't understand.
Because that's what's, that's what's existing on the site. So, my point is, even if we got rid of this cottage...
It's not grandfathered in, am I correct?
It is.
Well, all but, it is all grandfathered.
The eighteen thousand, the eighteen thousand square feet is all grandfathered in?
Correct. It is pre-existing zoning.
Pre-existing legal.
It is pre-existing the town's development.
I'm sorry, so, pre-existing zoning?
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Before zoning existed.
Non-conforming, before.
Before our zoning was put into place, much of the impervious areas and the coverage on the lot was already established. As the applicant stated, the pool was built in nineteen, in the nineteen sixties. You know, the only, the only, the only...
Sixty-one, because it shows up on the sixty-one survey, right?
Building permits we have for this property were for building additions in the nineteen nineties.
Nineteen sixty-four and nineteen ninety are the only two COs and permits that were ever issued.
Correct. And that was prior to the town's develop, the coverage requirements.
When it came into effect.
Correct.
But now the cottage is grandfathered.
But the cottage is...
The cottage is not grandfathered anymore.
So, the eight, so...
But there, we're talking about nine hundred square feet.
But the cottage was five hundred and...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two square feet. So out of that pre-existing eighteen thousand, subtract that five hundred and seventy-two...
Yeah, it's eighteen, seven, six, nine, subtract five hundred and sixty-two.
Right, that is the pre-existing, non-conforming, allowable development coverage. What you have asked the applicant to do is to do better than that. And, and the applicant is willing to do that in examining, and, and I have to tell you, what will be critical in your resubmission is identifying what's there today, and what you're taking away, and how much area that is worth.
Secondly, I believe you'll get one building that doesn't have a dual era on it. And you knock that one building down, you'll have one building that's gone, and therefore, that's probably one of the five issues that exist on setbacks.
No, because, but again, it's, it's pre-existing.
I know, it's pre-existing.
Right. Well, again, your challenge is to see how you could bring the site into conformance, meet your needs, and reduce your coverage. And, and you're, and building coverage typically, you know, you are over in development coverage and building coverage. So what you can do to try and reduce both areas would be...
And FAR, so we get rid, so we'll reduce, we're gonna try to reduce all of that.
Yeah, so I assume that, that in this area here, there's gonna be a fair amount of work, thinking, I should say, to, to see what you can do.
Like I led with, we're gonna sit down, we hear you, we're gonna sit down with our engineer, our architect, and get rid of as much as we can.
One other aspect that wasn't shown on the plans, although you did speak about it, was the four parking spaces that are required. It is unclear as to where those four parking spaces are. So with your engineer and really looking at redefining the spaces and trying to compartmentalize and pare down, also look to those, where are those parking spaces? Where are they? How does the site circulation function, trying to reduce and improve for your purposes?
So, I have to, I have to apologize, because I was so shocked by the, by the numbers, I missed the phrase, ZBA is required for any additional development coverage. And that's true for development coverage, floor ratio, so on and so forth, so.
I get it now.
Yeah, the variances are for the three, twenty-four.
Yes.
Can I keep the pool?
Yes.
But, but, but. Yes, but, but, but. Now, you, often he does five buts, and that's really serious.
Okay.
But he only got three here.
Every weekend.
We have, we throw a mean pool party, I'll tell you that. I'll tell you that.
No, we can't come, sir.
That's okay.
Now I can never come to your pool.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. I'll change my name. I'll change my name.
I have been to pool parties at your neighbor's.
Yes, I can, I've heard those, too.
Yeah, well, yes.
Who's him?
You've probably heard me.
Yeah.
But I'd like to, but I would like to, to ask the question, in that the pool is out of position on the property, is, would some mitigation be in order? Haven't been there to do a site visit to see what the impact is on the road, so on and so forth. But as you said, you're, you're willing to do some screening for the cottage. I'm curious as to whether some screening along the road for the pool would be necessary.
It's, we do have screening.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a whole row of arborvitae.
Okay.
And then we also have coverage where the pool equipment is.
Could we have photos of that next time you come?
Absolutely.
That would be great. That's really a help, because it's, you know, it's, we don't want people driving and then, oh, look at all the people playing in the pool, crash.
You can't see the pool?
That's great. Simply great, simply great.
Thank you. Yeah, no, you can't see the pool. We didn't even know that the pool was in the front of the house until we went to see it for the first time.
And the road there is super-duper narrow, so most people are just focusing on driving straight, going by it.
White knuckle.
And they're not looking left or right. Or they'll look at the view to the left over.
That's good, so they have two hands, ten-two, right?
Yes.
And, and, but no, nothing in the hand for the cellphone, that's a worry.
They're not texting.
That's one, it's a no-texting zone.
It's a no-texting zone.
Not to think about signs for that, joking.
The house numbers do a good job of confusing you, because the house next door is one twenty-nine, and we're forty-eight.
Also...
That was my confusion, trying to find the house.
It goes like two thousand or something.
Yeah, behind me, yeah, it's...
Am I right? It's, one is Bridge Road and the other is Ridge Road?
Yes.
Yeah, Quaker Bridge.
Yes.
Also confusing.
The bridge.
Yeah.
And Ridge just rides up top.
So, we have asphalt drives that go right up to the property line. That would be also something, perhaps, if you, you know, as you look at asphalt, just to pull it back, and again, get some planting in between the property lines. It's just very unusual for us to see that, you know, they're up here, I believe, right up against the line.
You have to, you have to send a photo. I don't know if you got one for that, as to what people would see if there were a house over here. We'd like to see where the other ones are.
Okay, initially, I just focused on the cottage, when I was out there taking pictures. I, I wasn't the rest of the site, but understood, and I will, I'll get you all that information.
We're trying to do very reasonable things to, you know, make it better, on, on the line of what you've already done, or what you saw when you came with the arborvitae, or arborvitae, I should say.
Just for clarification, are you requesting the applicant perform some stormwater counts? At least, I mean, do you have the discretion? Technically, doesn't need it.
Well...
It doesn't need it technically?
No, it doesn't need it technically.
No, but you guys have all the discretion in the world to...
But perhaps when we see, see these, these reductions, perhaps then you can give us an opinion as to whether or not, after we see these reductions in, in impervious service...
I would think if they're reducing it by a substantial amount, there would be no reason to mind it.
Yeah, but they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get much more than, you know, a thousand would, I'd be surprised. But it's, but we don't wanna, right, now, the other thing is, this is a sidewalk here. Does it extend to the house?
It does. That's, that's the survey that we're looking at here on our site plan.
There's a proposed with the...
It's proposed, it's, it's an additional sixty-four square feet.
Excellent, so that, yes.
Correct. And you're still under the thousand.
Still under the thousand.
Based on the code.
Yes, yes.
And I think one of the other issues is that pre-existing cottage, which was stopped work, as I recall, the pictures show that it's a fairly low house. It doesn't have a big high, you know, roof line or anything like this. So again, it's, it's low to the ground.
One story.
Yeah, one story. So, again, visuals are gonna be, you know, modest at, at most.
There's a, there's a utility room. What's in the utility room? That is for brooms and stuff, or is that for heating equipment?
I'd have to, yeah.
Heating, laundry.
All right, now, is the heating system exempt? Usually, if you have a, a oil burner, that's not part of the thousand feet.
I don't know. I'd have to check with the phone and check it out, to be very honest.
Make a note of that, please. That might, that might be another twenty square feet or ten, or five even.
Okay. How do we, just, because this has come up before, when people start building projects without, where's the building department coming on this? Is there...
They issued a stop work?
They're the ones that issued the stop work order.
Okay, is there any, I mean, but we had a conversation about go, not going after, but almost reprimanding the contractors and the engineers and the architects that kinda turn a blind eye and let this happen, who all know better.
We should know better.
Any guy who's swinging that hammer, how to have known he needed a permit to build that cottage? You cannot plead ignorance on that.
Most instances, it goes, obviously, enforces it to the homeowner. In some cases, though, Stephen and Tom and Richard have done it in the past, they do sometimes give a ticket to the contractor as well, in some cases.
Well, I mean, that might be appropriate here, too.
The, the building permit costs three times the normal, what a normal building permit costs, and they also have a...
Oh, it does? Oh.
Some kind of a, I forget how much the fee is in addition to that, like punishment.
It's sort of like that, when it's the as-built fees, it's like triple.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. That helps me.
That, that's, okay.
And then...
If it's an as-built.
Put on your list, perhaps, to talk to the contractor and ask for a rebate. I'm serious.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so am I hearing we should come back here again?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Or we go over to the ZBA?
No, I would schedule the ZBA also, but in the meantime, maybe you can get back to us, you know, the ZBA only meets once, once a month.
Well, I can't get to the ZBA. I either need a referral from your board, or I need the building inspector to deny me. And after speaking with the building inspector, we decided that coming through your board was the best path. So, we'll put together all the information you requested, resubmit, and come on back.
So we'll see what the first meeting, meeting in April, April second, is it?
Yes.
And I, for one, if the, if you have difficulty in your negotiations, I'm not gonna help you one iota on that, but I certainly, if you...
With the contractor, you're saying?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, not at all. But it just, it strikes me that if you wish to tell us sometime what his name was, we, we could, we could accept that name.
Thank you very much for your time.
The April, April second meeting, the deadline is March eleventh. So I don't know.
Can you do it in six days?
Or do you want to do the April sixteenth meeting?
It's gonna be tough.
It's tough, it's pretty tight.
That's, that's pretty tight.
If you don't make that one, the March twenty-fifth deadline for the April sixteenth meeting.
It's twenty-five for April sixteen?
Right.
Yeah, you'll have your taxes in by then, so nothing to worry about, other than coming here.